Good evening. I have in our 6:45 meeting, a special meeting. It's a public hearing on ordinance 33-25. You'll all stand with me, say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public meeting. For an ordinance vacating a part of an alley located in the... Ordinance 33-25, an ordinance vacating a part of an alley located in the block of 15 of TH Kirby's addition to the city of Muncie, Indiana.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Van Ice and I'm from Ashton Land Surveyor here in Muncie. The project that we're working on, what we're trying to do is vacate a little strip of an alley that has not been vacated. This is south of Weiser, west of Brady, Wolf would be on the west, and the Cardinal Greenway's on the south. The property, this little sliver of an alley has not been vacated. To the north in 2021, I believe it was vacated, to the south, the Cardinal Greenway had theirs vacated a long time ago. So this alley cannot be servicing anyone either north-south or east or west, it's kind of just a piece of land that's landlocked that we're getting vacated. We do have the utilities that have signed off on it, or the ones that have, we only have one that did not respond, but nobody seems to be in this area. And what we're trying to do is conjoin the property so our homeowner can rebuild her garage, which used to sit on the alley, but it used to sit in the alley across both sides. So we're going to be putting it back, but it will be now all her property.
And have they... Sorry. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing as no one else to speak on this ordinance, we will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting for regular council meeting.
So move.
Settle.
Motion made by Councilman Basham to adjourn, seconded by Councilman Powell. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? All right.
Thousands of individuals. There are many individuals that have came through the Muncie school system that received encouragement, challenge for their lives, and they stepped up to do those things. And there are different people that have affected those things. We're very proud of what Muncie Central has accomplished. We're proud of what happened during the time of Muncie South Side and Muncie North Side. There were many, many different programs from the middle schools all through the high school, and we're very thankful for that. This evening, we would like to speak of that just for a few moments. We'll talk about an individual that started their teaching career at North Side High School during the fall semester of 1987. Knowing his first position would be short term due to North Side's upcoming transition to a middle school, this individual was determined to make the final semester a memorable experience for their students. At the conclusion of North Side's final year as a high school, this individual was hired as the band director at South Side High School in the summer of 1988. By now, that individual knows who I am speaking with. The South Side Band Program had experienced several director changes over the previous years, resulting in a decline in both participation and performance. But this individual is determined to change that and rebound the program's pride and even surpass its previous successors. Because this individual built success everywhere he went, everything that he did. Under this individual's direction, the band earned a consistent gold superior rating at the Indiana State School Music Association ISMA contest, countless solo and ensemble gold medals, and state level performances beginning in 1989. South Side became a perennial Indiana State Fair night school Sweet 16 band. In the summer of 2000, this individual teamed up with one of his former students. Isn't that amazing? He had taught this individual, and this individual, who went off to college, became a band director, came back, and now they have teamed up. And it says that they teamed up together to lead the South Side High School and the Wilson Middle School Band Program. Together, they built on the past achievements, winning State Fair Band Aid contests five times, finishing runner-up twice. He continued to build success. After his former student moved into administration, he continued working with new directors until South Side High School's closure. Even through the transition, the bands maintained their tradition of excellence. He instilled that within them, adding another State Fair championship and five more runner-up finishes. When South Side became a middle school, he remained there mentoring the high school band and directors while dedicating more time to his family. And during the first summer of that South Side-Central merger, Muncie Central won the State Fair Band Aid Contest, the school's first championship since 1953, marking the start of a new era for Muncie's unified high school band. And as South Side's middle school band director, he continued to support the high school program through several leadership changes. Eventually, eventually, he was asked again to step in and to lead Central Band himself to provide students with the stability and quality musical experience. Once again, he accepted the challenge, and once again, he was successful. When asked to remain as head band director at Muncie Central, he agreed. Since the merger, the Muncie Central Band has received superior gold ratings in the state's most challenging musical divisions. Students have consistently earned gold medals at solo and ensemble contests with numerous state qualifiers, three State Fair Band Aid runner-up finishes, two additional State Fair championships. Today, he has led or helped lead the band to nine Indiana State Fair Band Aid championships. That's not the reason that he's being recognized. He's a difference maker. He makes a difference. He's spent his whole career, 39 years plus, in transforming the lives of students through music education, instilling in them not only a love for music, but also lessons in commitment, perseverance, teamwork, resilience, and he has taught generations of students how to learn from failure and how to lead with integrity and how to find success in life. Thousands of Muncie students have been influenced by this individual's guidance, many whom have gone on to become accomplished professionals, educators, community leaders, and musicians. He is more than a successful band director. He's a lifelong educator, a mentor, and truly a difference maker in Muncie. Some of his achievements I want to mention. A 1982 graduate of Delta High School. He holds two degrees from Ball State University in music education and secondary education, was a member of Five U Alpha Symponia, the National Professional Fraternity for Men in the Field of Music, dedicated teacher in the Muncie Community Schools since 1987. And we mentioned the schools: North Side, South Side, Wilson, South Side Middle School, and Muncie Central High School. The State Fair Band Aid accomplishments. Third place in 1988, and then brought them to 10 State Fair Band Aid championships. In 1996, he was recipient of the Lilly Endowment Grant. He performs, he still plays, by the way. He's quite a trumpet player. Cedar Point Hot Tamale Band in the 80s. Cedar Point Oboe Band in 1980s. America's Hometown Band. Muncie Symphony Orchestra, White River Orchestra. He's been community involvement with the Hamilton County Community Band and the Hometown Band as their guest conductor. Currently, the board president of the Muncie Symphony Orchestra, also known as the Orchestra Indiana. I will say I have some thoughts here from former students that I'd like to tell you just a little bit of what he has done. Mentor to the students and colleagues' statements are as follows. "John is someone I push myself to be like. The number of people that he has impacted in this community is beyond in this life, and he is so inspiring, more than he'll ever know. You have been a great example of what it means to impart hope, confidence, and a strong sense of self-worth as an educator. I love being a part of your amazing legacy, even if you wear purple." That was a tough one to say, but that's okay. And that's for us South Side people. We can never forget him. He has played such a major role in our music journey. Another one said, "He has a heart of gold." John teaches, he opens the doors, the doors for his students and his friends to learn. He makes his kids want to do their best. They want him to be proud of them. They work really hard. He doesn't expect anything from them that he doesn't give himself. He laughs with them, he yells at them, and he makes them do it again, and again, and again, and again. And then he tells them some hilarious story, they all crack up, and the ability he has to open your mind and make you understand is amazing. He's just an incredible individual. John has always been a tough-love kind of a teacher. At first, what he says to you as a student or a mentee can feel like criticism, but over time, you realize that that, that he is saying is exactly what you stand in need of. A profound ability, belief in your ability to succeed. He doesn't coddle you. He tells you what you need to hear, but only if you can handle it. He always led all of us by example, demonstrating his own discipline and unwavering commitment. He taught me that setbacks should be viewed as an opportunity for growth and that the only failure is not getting back up and trying again. His unwavering belief in my potential instilled within me the confidence that I needed to persevere through challenging times, and I'm very thankful for him holding me to a higher standard and showing me that the toughest lessons are ultimately the most valuable ones. John not only taught our students from junior high and high school, but he also was professor of music at Ball State, who gave trumpet lessons. My sons both had it. And now John has the opportunity to teach my granddaughter, and she has lessons with him. We're honoring John Clark tonight. John, if you would come.
Jeff, thank you. This was unexpected, and I appreciate it. I, I, I can say one thing about listening to all of that is I'm proud to be a citizen of Muncie. I'm proud to be a teacher of Muncie schools. And at Muncie on the Move, what is it, Wednesday? The mayor and I were talking about the challenges that our students have and what it means to be a part of a successful program, that they take that information and go out into the community once they do graduate. And he was recognizing what you were saying about the achievements of the marching band. And boy, I, I, I say this, I couldn't do it without the people sitting over here. I mean...
Hey, roll call.
Mr. Dishman?
President.
Mr. Selby?
President.
Mr. McIntosh?
President.
Mr. Green?
President.
Ms. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Garrett?
Here.
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 Okay, at this time, I'd approve, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our September meeting.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second. Okay, motions been made by Councilman Selby, seconded by Councilman McIntosh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or do we do roll call? It's on. Let's do a roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
President Mason?
Yes. Yeah, are there any appointments to any boards or commissions that we need to do this evening?
Is there an opening, sir, for the Human Rights Commission?
Excuse me?
Is there, is there an opening for the Human Rights Commission?
Uh, the, the opening is a mayoral opening.
Oh.
I went back and looked. It's not a council.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I guess they'll let us know when their appointments are made.
Thank you.
Uh, committee reports.
Um, Mr. President, the Finance Committee met for the final time on the 23rd. It was lively. I did put a copy of the Form 4B on everyone's place setting, which is something that we discussed that night, and I guess we will approve the minutes the next time the Finance Committee meets, meets. That's all.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Um, I'd like to remind everybody, this is October, and this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And if you know somebody that has breast cancer or any kind of cancer, please give them a call and go, go and see them or, or show your love to them because they're, they're alone. And, and I don't know how that feeling is because I don't have cancer right, right at the moment. You never know when you could get it. But I appreciate that you would wear something pink this month, you know, just throw something pink on and wear out in the public to show your support. And, because I want to let these people know that have cancer. And I'd like to let the people though that are watching too, you, there's help out there for you. Don't, don't think you're all alone in this because no one fights alone in there. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dishman.
May I, yeah?
Yes.
I think early, I am a breast cancer survivor. This is my seventh year, and early detector, early detection is key. Please encourage your sisters, your mothers, your aunts, any, or your friends, your spouse to, to get that mammogram because it does, it saved my life, and I know it saves others, so.
I'm just actually going to do some housekeeping, if that's okay?
Sure.
All right. At this time, I make a motion to delay action on ordinances 30-25, 31-25, and 32-25, the three budget ordinances. Delay action on those ordinances and reconvene that meeting after the completion of all remaining items on the current agenda on Thursday, October 16th at 7:00 PM solely for the purposes of considering those three budget ordinances. A second?
Okay, motions made by Ms. Powell, seconded by Ms. Goya. Do we do roll call? Roll call.
Ms. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yeah.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
President Mason?
Yes.
I recommend we take that vote again and not allow Mr. Garrett.
Agreed, agreed. Mr. Garrett isn't able to vote on that motion.
Yes.
Can we have that roll call one more time, please?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna redo the roll call. Mr. Garrett is not allowed to vote on that ordinance.
All right. Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
President Mason?
Yes.
Uh, Thursday, October 16th at 7:00 PM. Mr. Mason, may I, may I explain why we did that? Council did that because we cannot proceed with any other items on the agenda and have Mr. Garrett, Councilman Garrett, vote on those if those budget ordinances are open and up for consideration. So we are delaying action on those three items, and we'll reconvene this meeting on Thursday, October 16th at 7:00 PM to address those when Mr. Garrett is back.
Hey, ordinance 25, 26-25.
Sir, I, I, may I? Councilman Dishman and I observe the ASME firefighters and police negotiations, and during this month, we observe the police and firefighter negotiations, which are ongoing. But Jason Chaffin of the firefighters asked that I give all of you from that meeting, that last meeting, a comparative document comparing the salaries of Muncie firefighters with firefighters around the state. And I'm just delivering that on his behalf.
Any other reports? Okay, ordinance 26-25. Ordinance 26-25. Being an ordinance to amend the city of Muncie Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance from the R4 Resident Zone to the B.C. Community Business Zone on premises located at 1600 North Willing Avenue, Muncie, Indiana.
Okay, my first time doing this. I'm Belinda Hughes. I am a resident of Yorktown, Indiana. I grew up in Muncie, born and raised. And we have acquired this home. My son lived there for a while, and we decided it was the perfect spot to move the Coco, our toy store. So we've been refurbishing it, and it's starting to look pretty beautiful. It's the little yellow, so in a sea of white homes, you'll see the yellow. It is next door to the Dollar General and across the street from other businesses. So we felt it was a good location. We will have sensory toys to meet some needs of some very special people in our community, which they all have my heart, if you know me. And we have developed a baby line as well that is sensory friendly for babies, so we're really excited to bring that to the community, and we'll have special things for moms. And since I have a new grandson this year, and my son said there's not a lot for dads, he's doing a dad corner. So we'll have a little bit of everything for the community, and we're really excited about that.
Mr. President? I make a motion to adopt ordinance 26-25.
I second it.
Okay, motions made by Ms. Powell to adopt, seconded by Councilman Bash.
I, I just wanted to make a comment. That's exciting about the sensory toys. As an OT, as an occupational therapist, that's really exciting to hear, and...
You just let me know whatever you need.
There's another resource in town. Thank you.
We're gonna be partnering with a new sensory gym, and we'll have, we'll supply toys for them to sell and be available for family care.
And kudos to your son for looking out for his dad.
Thank you. That's right. We have awesome fun carriers and all kind of things for dads.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a question for. The residents that are there, have you spoken with each and every one of them? And how do they feel concerning that?
Around there, you mean?
Yes.
Um, actually, we have some that are back behind us we've never seen. They've never come out of the home, and their business is on both sides of us, so...
To the south is a business?
Mm-hmm.
That's not a residential house?
Mm-mm, not to my knowledge.
I know you have the barber shop two doors down, but it's a residence next door. You're the one with the gravel parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. And the house directly south of you. That individual has contacted me.
Okay.
Uh, he's not in favor of this.
Okay.
He, he did mention that he doesn't see how you can run a business with such a small area, but you did say this is specialized individuals. This is not like a Walmart or something of that nature. It's a lot smaller.
Yes, very much so.
Um, I would really like to see you talk to the, the neighbors because it's only half a block street, and ask the different individuals there how they feel because that will be an increase in traffic there. I know that the individual owns the house just to the south of you. He has gravel parking out front, space of about three people. And I know he's concerned that overflow from parking at your place will end up in his drive. He's concerned about that. Is there any provision to prevent that from taking place?
We will have limited parking, and it will be marked. So our, our hours are limited as well. We're not open every day during the week, and we're not open on evenings or anything like that. So we are very limited.
Okay. All right, thank you.
This is actually from Mr. Green. Counselor Green?
Yes.
Do you know if, does that person live there, or does he rent that home?
No, he owns it.
Does he live there?
Uh, he did up to just a few weeks ago.
Okay.
Uh, he's having treatments in Indianapolis and had to move down there for the moment. Don't know exactly what his intention is from here on out, but I know he was concerned about it. He reached out, talked to me about this, so...
You have a question?
Uh, yeah, I guess I do.
Yes.
What are the hours?
Well, right now, we are open on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Okay. So... What are the hours on those days?
I'm sorry. We haven't really established that, so, because we haven't opened our doors yet. So my guess is it'll be like a 10 to 4 kind of thing.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call. Just question. Anyone from the public have any questions?
Christopher Bilbrey, this sounds like an absolutely fantastic thing, and I hope here in a moment when you guys vote that you'll vote for this and pass it through. My question is, did you guys just commit an open door violation when you voted to suspend and continue the budget items until the 17th? When did you guys have that discussion? Was it prior to the meeting, before you guys started the meeting? Did you guys meet up here and have that discussion and make that, that's an open door violation? So could we have discussion on that? That the nine of you met before the meeting was adjourned, before the meeting was opened, made a discussion on a vote? I've been trying to get in touch with you guys and let you know about Mr. Garrett's absence since last week. He wouldn't come clean about it. I asked if he was gonna be here. You guys could vote without him. I told him, I, I was aware that he would not be able to vote by Zoom, and you guys met a few minutes before 6:45 and made that decision. How's that not an open door violation?
Number one, point of order, this is not on the, the object that we're talking about. Number two, was that a, where we were discussing an item with our attorney? And the city attorney, so that would be?
But, yeah. Plus, sorry.
Yes, yes, sir.
I think what we were discussing, though, is if this were to happen, if we had a date, because we wanted to make sure, we wanted to get a date so that if it passed...
Could you discuss that during the meeting?
What, what date? We, we wanted, we wanted to have a date.
What was the point of meeting to discuss that?
We wanted to have a date.
For the meeting?
I'm telling you, we wanted to, this is my understanding, is that we wanted to have a date so that we could tell everyone. We wanted to be transparent. We wanted to be able to tell you today what that was rather than do it afterward. There was talk about choosing a date afterward, and we decided we would rather have a date chosen so that we can announce it right here during the meeting. So that's what we discussed, the date.
I just wanted to go on record. I know this is not in this ordinance, but I, I wouldn't have had any other chance to say it during, and it's important to get this out first because I will be filing an open door complaint tomorrow, and we'll let Jennifer Ruby decide. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Selby?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Hey, ordinance 27-25. Ordinance 27-25. Being an ordinance to amend the city of Muncie Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance from the R5 Resident Zone to the B.C. Central Business Zone on premises located at 718 North Walnut Street, Muncie, Indiana.
Mr. President, I make a motion we adopt ordinance 27-25.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made to adopt by Ms. Powell, seconded by Ms. Selby. Yes, sir.
I'm just here to answer questions if you have. Jonathan Chandler's the owner of the property there.
I do have a question. Has anything changed since the last meeting you were here?
Not at all.
Did anybody approach you or anything like that about?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Full support from the neighborhood, so...
Okay, thank you.
Unless you guys heard otherwise, I haven't heard anything.
No, I haven't heard anything either. I was just asking.
Anybody have any questions? Any questions from the public?
I would like to ask the council to advise these people that they need to be back next month also for a second reading of this stuff, because a lot of these people don't know. And then when you guys come up next month and these folks ain't here, then you guys are gonna table it. So you might let them know about how the ordinances and stuff work, please. Thank you.
This is, this is the second reading. This is the second reading. This is, this is up for adoption.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Previously intended?
Yes.
Are we doing voting now? I'm sorry.
Ordinance 27-25. Motion to adopt.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Powell? Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yeah.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Yes. Hey, ordinance... Hey, ordinance 25 dash 29 dash 25.
Ordinance 29 dash 25, an ordinance amending chapter 80 traffic schedules of the Muncie Code of Ordnance, ordnance, ordinances, University Avenue Parking.
Good evening, Council. Dan Ridenhour, Mayor of Muncie. A couple of things that I would like to do. First of all, each of you should have received a packet from President Mearns at Ball State for the ability of the rest of the members of the audience and the public to be aware of that. I'm going to go ahead and read it because it's, it's almost at spring, fall break.
Mr. Mayor, would you hold that thought until we make the motion to adopt? Could we do that, Mr. President, first?
I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt 29, 25.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Basham to adopt, seconded by Mr. Green.
I apologize. I apologize.
Go ahead.
So this is dated September 29th. It says, Dear Mayor Ridenhour, and again, it said copies were presented, presented to council. I'm just going to read it. Ball State University supports the city's proposed plan to add bicycle lanes along University Avenue between Dick Street and Wheeling Avenue. When the proposed ordinance was introduced, we shared that our college and community collaboration grant with the Lilly Endowment includes a commitment to create a physical connection between the village and downtown Muncie. I understand that some members of the Riverside Normal Neighborhood do not support the proposed ordinance. At my request, Chris Palladino met with the neighborhood's executive committee on September 24th. During this meeting, Chris responded to the concerns about this proposed ordinance. Specifically, Chris provided the following information. Number one, the individuals who attended the meeting indicated that University Avenue was not their preferred route for a connection between campus and downtown. But constructing a shared use path along Riverside Avenue, their preferred route, poses several significant challenges, including acquiring right of way from private property owners. Moreover, this alternative route does not provide a direct connection to the village. Number two, the people who attended the meeting also indicated that losing on-streets parking spaces along University Avenue would harm the village, given the increased demand for parking. But earlier this summer, City Council unanimously approved an ordinance that added 42 new public on-street parking spaces in the core of the village. In addition, 47 additional new on-street spaces will be added with the completion of these new projects. With these changes, we estimate that now more than 1,750 parking spaces will be available within a four-minute walk of the village. This part, the parking map is available on your, on the village website. Number three, the people who attended the meeting also indicated that removing on-street parking along University Avenue would lead to increased speeding. During the meeting, Chris provided multiple data sources indicating that this concern is not valid. Newly striped, protected bicycle lanes combined with reduced width of vehicle travel lanes are an effective traffic calming measure. And Chris provided several sources that support this conclusion. Moreover, adding colorful crosswalk treatments, as we have suggested, has also proven to reduce vehicle speed. Number four, the people who attended the meeting are concerned that the loss of on-street parking along University Avenue will lead to future demolition of garages off the alleys to satisfy tenant parking demand. Losing garages may be a valid concern that could impact the historic integrity of the neighborhood. But on-street parking is currently limited to two-hour parking during the week. Chris's conversations with current landlords confirmed that on-street parking is not marketed as an option for tenant parking. Chris also offered several suggestions for consideration relating to how best to address the potential future loss of garages. Our university recommends protected bike lanes on both sides of the street to include painted buffer between the bicycle lane and vehicle lane. We also suggested adding colored crosswalk treatments at intersections to help further slow vehicle traffic. And our university will provide funding for this treatment. As we previously offered, our university will also install new landscaping along the Martin Street bicycle path and assume responsibility for maintaining this painting strip to help provide the overall appearance of the important gateway from the village and campus. We know this concern has previously been expressed by people in the neighborhood and we want to help provide a solution. I believe that a safer bike route between the village and downtown Muncie provides an important amenity and it addresses a key goal of improving connectivity between these two places. I've enclosed a copy of the slide deck that Chris used with the neighborhood. I assume you all received this.
Thank you.
I have, let's see, these slides include more specific information about safety statistics and potential bike lane treatments. We look forward to continuing to partner with the city to advance the best interest of every citizen of Muncie. So I wanted to read that. Also, I wanted to state that there are individuals here from the board, including the president from downtown Muncie, which already provided a letter of support. They are willing to speak if you need for them to. But I, I know that at least two of the board members are here. I also want to say that I did listen to the comments and concerns. And we did already fill in the potholes in the alley between North Street and University. This is the area that's to the south of Riverside. We are after paving season. We have two more streets we're trying to get done before the weather gets truly bad. But after paving season, we're going to go through and cut back the limbs on that alley. And we also decided to go ahead and do the alley between University and Ashland, which is on the north side. So we'll be making sure that any of the potholes in that particular alley are handled and we'll cut back the limbs to make sure that works well. I also want to keep in mind that this, the way these, this is going to be put together will be Ball State designed. And it's coming from the Lilly Foundation. They provided in a community and college grant application. Ball State University received the most of all this, all the universities across the state. But a part of it was to create this connection. So there is roughly a million dollars that's, will be coming from the Lilly Foundation with this particular development that will provide, I think, a beautiful arts-based walk or bike ride from the village to the downtown area. I know our downtown businesses could use the support. I know also, I think the, I think, yeah, we have, the Arts Commission Director is here as well. They also had provided a letter of support the last time, I'm sure she would speak as well. But I just wanted to, and then the other thing was the safety to the bikers. We, the city engineer worked with Chris and their team to develop a way to provide that safety. So there will be an area between the cars and the bike lanes. So there will be an area that will help protect those bikers. Because it was a concern not only of the residents who spoke last week from the neighborhood, but also it's a concern for the bikers as well. And I know, we wanted to make sure we addressed those. So we hope that with these additions and the support that you will look favorably and pass this particular ordinance. Thank you.
I've got a question for the mayor.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we have a question for you.
You mentioned the Lilly Grant and I mean, that's an awesome thing. I know you guys worked hard for that and that's great. But they did not specifically state that it has to be university, correct? They just, they, they want to have a, a pathway between the university and downtown, correct? But they don't have specifics. It wasn't specifically said university.
I'll let you finish.
Is that correct?
They stated that it had to be, that, that million dollars is only for a connector trail from the village to downtown.
Right. But it says they have to be through a university, just a connector.
That is what was on the application for the grant. So it wasn't our grant, it was Ball State's grant. They did the application. We signed off and gave letters of support. But I, I can't say what was exactly on the application, whether that, I know that was the preferred route.
Connector is, okay, a preferred route possibly.
Yep, that is the preferred route. But I, I can't say whether that grant would be lost if it were a different street. But it certainly doesn't make sense to be Riverside.
Can you please talk about that? Mr. Mayor?
Would Ball State be, thank you, Mr. President. Will Ball State be responsible for like the bike lane, the paint? They're going to keep maintenance of that area forever?
That's the plan.
Okay. And, and zero tax dollars, right, are going into that? That's all from a grant, all the modifications?
Let me clarify that. I mean, the, the city did pay for the street work.
Yes.
We paid for the sidewalk, we paid for the curbs. So there has been, there have been funds put in, but we are not paying for the bike lane for the artwork that they're planning on putting down, for the signage that they're planning on putting down to make sure that people know that it is a.
That's what my question was to you and that wasn't very clear. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I?
Yes.
And nor does it make sense to take the route down reserve into downtown, does it, for that?
It's, it's not as ideal. Because, and part of it is that Wheeling is a big, a heavily trafficked street. And we're putting in a gateway that will definitely be enticing and helpful for people to say, oh, we're downtown. And we wouldn't have that same feel if it were coming down other ways. That's, that's why it's clearly the preferred route.
Right.
Mr. President, I have a question for the mayor. When they go across the bridge to come into downtown, what are you putting in for a bike lane there? And what is the safety issues that?
Yeah, there is already a bike lane there. It doesn't have as many safety components as we would like. I'm not going to promise that we are looking at road diets on that. But that, we would consider whatever options we can come up with.
Now, would that be something that Ball State could help?
No.
That would be on the city? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. President? And doesn't it then make more sense because of the gateway type park that's being constructed now across from City Hall? That becomes a part of the entry into Muncie?
Yes. That is definitely the, the plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Evening, Council. Cameron Grubbs. I just had a couple things, just, you know, I, I think to your point, it'd probably be good before voting to have all that information because I do feel like it was kind of presented in a way to where it was possible to lose that grant if this were not voted upon. So it'd probably be good for the mayor's office, the administration, to provide all information to the council so that they can make a sound decision. At least that's how I would think that things should happen. I did have a question. You know, I, I wonder about the methodology. Has anybody asked Ball State students or people that live there, would they take this route? And have we put forth a survey or anything in, in the methodology there? Because at the last meeting, the methodology for figuring out if it would impact people was to stop and look one day a week and see how many cars were parked on the street. It's not very scientific in my book. But based on the fact that this, that this ordinance was filed on August 25th and the dates provided by the mayor were August 16th is Saturday, August 22nd is Friday. Those were the only two dates. Prior to the mayor deciding that, we felt that that seemed to, quote, "We felt that that seemed reasonable to come to the council," were two days, a Friday and a Saturday, worth of information. And then they gathered more, which was August 29th, a Friday, and another unlisted day, and then September 4th, a Thursday. I don't know about you, but I'm pretty sure that most college students aren't here on Fridays and Saturdays. They're going to go somewhere else. So I don't think that using that information is beneficial. And I didn't hear anything provided, have not seen anything on Facebook with further information backing up what those assumptions were. I don't know if anything was provided to you. Again, I've checked the transcripts, I mean, not transcripts, but the unit docs where everything should be put. And Facebook, I have not been able to find anything. So maybe you've been privy to information that I'm not. But I just thought you might have some things to think about there before voting.
Thank you, Mr. Grubbs.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Reese. I live in Industry Neighborhood. So, you know, this pathway to the village, I'll be honest, I use it. That's how I get to and from the village. We even ride our bikes every once in a while. We go to the Ever Bowl there and, you know, get some fruit smoothies and whatnot. So, so it's, 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 it seems like, it seems ideal for the purpose of what is happening. But I will say two things, one in particular. I know that the last time we had several people from the neighborhood that, that had some concerns last meeting regarding this. And in regards to a different, a different situation, Roe, you actually mentioned to somebody else who's up here, you appreciated their collaboration with the neighborhood and things like that as well. So one thing I would hope is that that neighborhood, I don't know if they're here to speak on behalf or against today. But if they're not here to speak either way, I would say that it's possible they just feel bullied into it. So that might be a possibility. I'm not saying, I haven't talked to them myself, so I'm not trying to say that. But I know they had quite a bit to say against it last time. So consider that. And then also the fact, I wouldn't say that these, these bike lanes are amazing. I mean, obviously I'd love to have bike lanes, that's great. But if we just look at downtown, right there at the corner of Main Street and Mulberry Street, people ignore those parking spots and they ignore those bike lanes and they fly up there and they turn right, right as I'm turning right, the same time, they're trying to pull out right, right next to me when I'm turning right. So these lines aren't safe necessarily. They're a little more safe than being butted right up next to it, but they aren't necessarily safe. So just want to make sure that you guys kind of consider those things when you're thinking about this too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese.
I'm Seth Rollins. I actually live in, I live on the edge of downtown, travel this probably multiple times a week to inform. I actually am in favor of a bike lane through this area. It makes, it's a lot of sense. One thing is like, I, I've traveled to a lot of different cities. Like my favorite example is, this, this area reminds me a lot of an area in Bloomington that connects the IU to their university neighborhood. And it's like a, the bike lane there is incredible. It's fully protected. Like it has ballards and they have actual like cement protections. One thing is if this is something that we're going to do like long-term, we should probably act, fully, fully, fully protect this. Make sure it has full protection from everything. And even like, and that, that neighborhood actually turns into a real trail going both ways. Kind of down, it's not the same exact, same as that street as university. They have a, a street that's kind of three lanes and they convert a full lane into a trail. It's probably not available in university, but they're like, something like that makes a lot more, like a lot more sense long-term. If we're going to do this long-term, make sure it's more protected. It is used, I use it pretty constantly. I live on the old West End and I go over the village and downtown pretty consistently. So it makes a lot of sense. Right now I go between, I do either North Street or University, but I haven't done University because it's been under construction. So just long-term, make sure it's protected. If this is something we're going to do, that's the major concern and everything else is kind of, it's nice that we have it now. So I appreciate and support as long as there's protection and more protection going on.
Any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Beth Nester. I had the privilege of speaking to you all at the September meeting on behalf of the Riverside Normal City Neighborhood Association. Tonight I'm here to speak on my own behalf, my personal behalf. My opinions also do not represent the, the opinion of my employer. First of all, I'd like to respond to the information about the safety issue. We also came with data about safety. We've published this information on our neighborhood Facebook page. I believe it was in materials that we sent to the city council as well very recently. According to the nonprofit Bike Head Safe, which provides pedestrian safety data, parking does indeed slow traffic. It does this by increasing friction or effectively narrowing the travel lane and making the street feel narrower for drivers, which encourages slower speeds. which encourages slower speeds and greater caution. This added friction forces drivers to be more attentive to parked cars and moving vehicles. It also adds a buffer zone between the moving traffic and the sidewalk, improving pedestrian safety as well. So there are other opinions on the issue of safety and bike lanes. I might also add, once again, that this is a major thoroughfare for first responders. We regularly have ambulance runs, we regularly have fire engine runs. It's a major run for buses as well, which stop every couple of blocks on that particular street. And we greatly appreciate the paving, the curbing, the new sidewalk cuts, the ADA sidewalk cuts. It is, it has made a great deal of difference in terms of the navigability of that particular street. It's also increased the speeds of people driving the street. I don't have a speed meter, but just anecdotally, as somebody who walks that street regularly, as somebody who has to pull out on that street regularly, the speeds have increased significantly since the repaving has, has happened. I know we talked a lot about safety last week. We also talked about the impact on parking in the neighborhood. I would really like to talk a little bit more about the negative impact on the historic character of our neighborhood. I've lived in this neighborhood for 34 years. In that time, I was drawn to the neighborhood initially by its charm. For those of you who know it, we have very eclectic historic structures. We have canopied streets. It's a beautiful space to live in. Each home originally had one to two car garages. They had front yards, backyards. It was very much a residential neighborhood. However, over the last several decades, many of the homes in the neighborhood have become investment properties, which you're well aware of. Inadequate zoning has enabled investors to turn homes that were meant to serve a family of four into rentals that often house significantly more people. And as each of those renters arrives in our neighborhood, they bring with them a vehicle. This has created a dire problem for our historic neighborhood. We've witnessed entire backyards and side yards being paved and gravelled over to create additional parking. We've witnessed garages being torn down to make way for more parking. We've witnessed renters parking on sides, sidewalks of side streets. We've seen renters parking in their front lawns. The situation only worsened when, two years ago, the city suddenly and without warning restricted on-street parking on University Avenue for two hours, which immediately started forcing more parking into what were very inadequate spaces behind homes at that particular point in time. Had we done parking surveys before that two-hour limit suddenly emerged in September of 2023, we probably would have had much more accurate data in terms of the amount of parking that was taking place on University Avenue. So basically, the historic charm and character of our neighborhood is being dismantled bit by bit. And issues with parking are a significant part of the problem. We do not want to see more historic structures destroyed. We do not want to see more backyards and side yards paved over to remember, to resemble the barren moonscapes that you now see lining the alleys adjacent to Neely Avenue, which recently was turned into no parking as well to accommodate the new Boulevard. We've tried addressing this problem by campaigning to protect pockets of our neighborhood with historic designations. This effort has been significantly confounded by a large number of investment properties in our neighborhood. Few of those owners really support our efforts to prevent them from making changes to their properties. We've been in conversation with various city and campus leaders for over a decade, asking for their help, requesting that they use their networks and influence to encourage investors and developers to make better decisions. They nod, they say they understand, they say they also regret what is happening. But then they approve property line variances, which allow people to add additional houses to lots, destroy trees, destroy garages. They appear to ignore renovation projects that change every available space in a home into a bedroom, including dining rooms, living rooms, and basements without proper egress. And as owners of investment properties overcrowd those homes and negatively impact the quality of life in our neighborhood, we hear comments like, you know, your historic designation efforts don't really matter because the rental property owners are going to tear everything down anyway. As a result, the quality of life in our neighborhood continues to decline despite our best efforts to correct that course. Within the next couple of years, 28 new townhomes and patio homes will be built as part of the village redevelopment efforts. We've been told that the prices of these homes will start at $35,000, $350,000. There may be one home in our neighborhood that will actually fetch that kind of price. There's a lot riding on the successful completion of this phase of the development. We support this phase of the development. Yet, we do wonder how attractive these homes are going to be, the buyers, if the quality of life in the neighborhoods surrounding them continues to decline. How will congested alleys, backyard moonscapes, no places for visitors or tradespeople to park in front of homes, and overcrowded parking on adjacent streets encourage them to purchase in our neighborhood? In conclusion, your vote on proposed ordinance 2925 isn't just a decision about eliminating parking for some to make a bike lane, or make bike lanes for all. Once the landscape of our neighborhood is altered by eliminating parking on University Avenue, it will not be restored. No one is going to be rebuilding garages. Nobody is going to be replanting trees. Nobody is going to be replanting grass to return it to its historic character. My neighbors and I are working really hard to make Riverside Normal City a place where people want to live, not a place where people have to live. That's why I encourage you to vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, John Oliver. I have a couple of quick questions. Are there three different things? I guess what I need is a clarification on what route will be bringing it right into the city? Are there three different options to that? Two different options, one option? So right down to University, two Wheeling? Okay. Can we check on the accident rate at that intersection? Because it's extremely high. There's hardly any viewing where you're coming from this direction. You can't see any traffic coming from the north. Or it's very limited. So there might be some things we need to check on there. Because I want to be safe if we go ahead and, if you could do, go ahead and go through with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Melinda Messinio. And these comments expressed do not represent those opinions of my employer. So one thing that is clear is that there are so many people, so many groups and organizations in our community that want the same thing. There is agreement that we want to celebrate public art. We want to provide safe green transportation and beautiful pedestrian paths. And we want to protect our historic neighborhoods. We have a campus that wants to build connections through the village to downtown businesses. And they have an amazing partner, Lilly. And we have a city council and mayor's office who's reaching towards the campus. These are great things. So what if the solution is to start with the things that we agree with? The campus has offered to put in these really amazing decorative crosswalks. Let's start there. Let's put them in. The city, specifically our mayor, who is the biggest Lorax that I know, which is a tree lover, by the way, has a deep commitment, thousand trees in a thousand days, planting more trees after the recent, he's, he's super dedicated to planting trees. And after the recent infrastructure changes, we are in need of more planting. So let's put those trees in, round number two, and build that corridor, like, this really critical corridor that we've made a commitment to Lilly to. There's been discussion about putting in human-scale lighting along the existing sidewalks with beautiful planters and arts and highly functional trash receptacles. Let's put those in. We actually don't know what the parking situation is going to be like until the theater, the retail, and the housing pieces are finished. We may actually need those parking spots. So let's see what happens when those buildings open, the construction is gone, and the people settle into their patterns. And the cool thing is, is we can start shaping those patterns now with those wayfinding signs everyone keeps talking about, those wellness encouragement, encouragement activities that will get us to walk four minutes to, from our parking spot to the theater. I'm with ya, I'm there. And those parking signs and apps to clarify that there are parking spaces available elsewhere. I know this is hard for the city council to decide on what to do. And you've got so many interests to balance here. I really appreciate what you're doing here. But what if a no vote now to the parking ordinance, or ordinance, is a yes to the rest? The rest of all those things that we do agree on? The crosswalks, the trees, the lights, the planters, the trash cans, the wayfinding signs, the apps, and the art? Now, I can imagine someone might say, no, Amanda, there's no money for all those beautiful things. I heard there's a million dollars, by the way. I didn't know it was a million. And if that is indeed the case, if there is no money for the crosswalks, the art, the trash cans, the lights, the receptacles, then none of this amazing quarter was gonna happen anyway, even with the parking spaces removed, even with those spots made available. In fact, the only commitment we exactly have right now is the paint that BSU has agreed to do. And in that case, the only people who'd be paying for this installation would be our neighbors, who've been fighting for over a decade to make sure those historic neighborhoods are protected. So this is what I hope. Let's put the parking ordinance on pause and work collaboratively. That is, the city, Ball State, our Arts Council, our amazing green transportation partners, our bike riders who do want to ride the bikes, but they're worried the paint might not be enough. And pause it so that we can do all the things that we do agree on. And we do agree on a lot. And if we put all those amazing things, I think we would have that beautiful corridor that everyone is dreaming of. And I do agree, we need to figure out where it turns because I've heard three different places where it switches onto the main path. And of course, safety is our number one concern. So thank you all, everyone, for your time. I do want to thank Chris and his team. He's been talking with us a great deal. And I think our neighborhood and all our partners here today. We can make this a beautiful, amazing space and still honor our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Zane Bishop, Muncie resident. I had previously sent a letter to the council last week outlining my support for this project. I don't want to reiterate every, any, everything, but I do want to go over a few things. First, I want to say that I bike, I walk, I take the bus, I drive throughout Muncie, to the village, to my friends who live in this neighborhood. I have never had issues finding parking ever. I have had a lot of concerns with safety of getting there if I'm biking or walking. And obviously, bus service only extends until certain hours. So, you know, regarding equity and, you know, access to Ball State, to the village, and to everything around there, this would be a great project. As Dr. Mezner said, you know, parking, adding parking on streets, having parking on streets really does have safety benefits. You can tell when you're driving by a bunch of parked cars versus if you're just on the open road. There are also studies showing that bike lanes add safety to streets. Also, I, I know there, not tonight, but there has been some conversation around weather. The biggest correlation between more biking is not with weather, cold weather cities. It's actually with infrastructure and safe streets. And unfortunately, like, the parking just isn't used. I, I don't know how lo, how much the data is that the mayor shared last month. I know that since this has been more actively being talked about over the last couple of years, I started observing more. I have very minimal records, but I try to look on different days, different times of day. The most I ever saw was four cars on my, on my account, on my count. I didn't do a ton of studies, but just looking at it and like, being around the area for years, you can tell that the parking is at least underutilized. And as far as the historic aspect of, you know, would this lead to more demolitions of garages? Would this lead to more parking lots? I think, you know, obviously, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. I think the best thing we can look at is Gilbert Street, which is two blocks south of University, and then the other streets in the Neely addition. Having on-street parking has not prevented any of those garages from getting torn down, has not prevented things from turning into, like, that whole alley's turned into basically giant gravel parking lots. And I certainly agree, like, you know, there's more that needs to be done in this neighborhood. There needs to be parking reform, like, these empty streets that allow parking, but only two hours and, or only if you're permitted and the permits are difficult to get, especially if you're renting. Like, those, that parking needs to be used more. There's no point of having a, a giant empty street. Let me see, I'm sorry, I don't want to go on too long. I, I think the main point is, you know, this, this has been kind of, you know, this idea of a trail from downtown to campus and to the village and to this, through this neighborhood has been proposed for over a decade now. You know, no neighborhood should be, should experience radical change. But they should also not be exempt from change. And at the end of the day, you know, this is something that's on the table that, you know, at least, you know, I also agree with Dr. Messinio, like, there needs to be more safety elements to this project. But at least as proposed right now, like, this would not be that hard to be undone and like, add back parking. And maybe more people will use it when it's added back on. But this would be a lot easier to undo than it is to vote yes tonight and stop in the way of this project that is hoping to bring, you know, a, a good look and a, and good safety elements to the neighborhood and to our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your letter.
My name is Franklin Gray. I am just here on my own, basically. I had questioned, there was an observation made that there's already a bike path on Wheeling. I would like to know where that is. If you're talking about the River Walk, technically, people are supposed to get off their bikes and walk them down there. It's not a bike path. And it's also, you require everybody coming down Riverside would then be required to cross Wheeling to get to the bike path. So where is the bike path on Wheeling currently that you're talking about? That was an observation somebody made. And I'm just curious about where it is. Also, I'm curious about how they would put a bike path on that section of Wheeling. I walk a lot, and I walk those sidewalks. The sidewalk is right next to the lane. City bus goes by you, you jump over because you feel like it's gonna hit you. Where are they gonna put that particular bike path? Are they going to take away one of the lanes on Wheeling? It's already problematic in some cases. I'm just curious. I don't know if anybody has an answer or not. Is something to think about?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Helen McPherson. I am also a resident of the Riverside Normal City neighborhood. I sent an email to all of you this morning and just appreciate all the thought and effort that's been going into this project. One of my biggest things is, yeah, just working towards compromise. So whether parking is removed or not, I am certainly in favor of adding a bike lane. I ride my bike on University quite often. I get it, I use it to get to work at Ball State. I rode my bike down University to get here this evening. And in fact, had a car probably going 40 miles an hour past me while I was at it. So that is one of the biggest concerns here. It's just that, that safety piece. So in the name of compromise, I think one idea that I have, I don't know how peaceful it is, but just the parking-protected bike lanes we see downtown, just having cars act as that barrier for a bike lane is something that's obviously allows parking to be maintained somewhat, but still allows for that development of the bike path. And that if you move that parking into the street a little bit, that should lead to those slower speeds that were mentioned in the safety studies. One other. One other just point with the speeds there, maybe just if our local law enforcement could actually enforce the speed limits there and make sure people are not going 45 miles an hour down a 30 mile an hour road, that would do a lot for both pedestrians and cyclists alike. So, yeah, once again, I'm in favor of the bike path in general, but I understand that there is certainly some compromise that could be done there. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything they want to add? Okay. Any questions from the council?
I, okay, go ahead, Sarah. Yeah, I just wanted to maybe get a point of clarification. The mayor mentioned, and I see that Ms. Side is in the audience, who's just the executive director of the Muncie Arts and Culture Council. Would you mind coming up to the podium? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
So I see we have the letter that the mayor passed out last month with the packet. And he said that you were in favor of this. And I read this, and I just want a clarification of what exactly the board agreed to be, is in favor of, I guess.
So I lead the Muncie Arts and Culture Council. I'm the executive director. My name is Tanya Side. I'd like to clarify what our mission is, first of all. We champion arts experiences, public art, and a thriving community for artists and allies. A part of this project that we support are the artistic crosswalks.
Okay, okay. So you're not necessarily, you don't have a position on parking or anything necessarily, you're just...
No, that would be mission creep for the Muncie Arts and Culture Council. We support any and all arts and cultural projects for the city.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Here's Ms. Hilton.
There's two things I'd like to say. I have spoken with Ms. Vicky Veach from Downtown Development, and she is in support of this project. And I wish she was here tonight to speak, but I know she has something that she couldn't be here. But she's in support of it, and, oh, yes, okay, sorry.
Yep, good evening. My name is Garrett, and I'm the current chair of the Muncie Downtown Development Partnership, also joined by Mr. Brian Ayers, who's our current vice chair. Yes, we are in favor of the ordinance. And like my predecessor, I would like to restate the mission of the Muncie Downtown Development Partnership, as I am trying to learn how to navigate an iPhone. So the mission of Muncie Downtown exists to create a downtown environment that results in sustainable and economic and cultural growth. I think it's important to state that for well over a decade, the local leaders from Ball State University, the city of Muncie, and Muncie Downtown Development have shared one common goal, and that's creating a strong and welcoming visual and physical link between the university and downtown. As Ball State moves forward with the plans for enhancements to the village and the new Performing Arts Center, establishing that connection will be key to ensuring the vitality and success of businesses in both areas, strengthening Muncie's identity as a unified, vibrant community. Muncie Downtown Development is committed to partnering with Ball State to build a coordinated marketing effort that encourages movement, engagement, and collaboration between campus and downtown, once again, helping both thrive together. As stated, there was a letter provided to the city council dated September 8. We do appreciate the council's consideration of this ordinance and its role in advancing improvements that will benefit the entire Muncie community. Thank you.
My second, thank you. The second point was, so I've received and read most of the emails that were sent to me, and hopefully, I've responded to everybody. But there were other, the other point, the other part of the coin is that people in the community, and, you know, not just in the neighborhood, wanted access to Ball State. So if they lived in Halton, and some people, you know what I mean? They wanted to come into Ball State and experience Ball State. And they were supportive of it, of the bike lanes, because they'll feel safer coming into Ball State on university. I'm just sharing some of the things that people have said.
Mr. President.
Yes, councilman.
I understand there's a lot of discussion yet that probably needs to happen on this, and I'd like to make a motion to table this.
For a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Green to table, seconded by Councilman Bash. Finish the public discussion first.
No, there's no discussion. You have to have a roll call.
Okay, so we get to vote, vote roll call, take roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I would, yes, to tabling, but I would like those discussions to continue. I would like the neighborhood to have that voice, because I feel like, yes, people from Halton want to go downtown, but they're doing it in the front yards of the people who live and are impacted by these ordinances that we're passing. And you just said last meeting that you like that collaboration with the neighborhood association, and that you think that you should listen to those voices. No, no, I'm just saying that you had just said last month as well. And I think that it's important. I've been a huge proponent of the Village Revitalization Plan, a project. But in this instance, we are, there is a huge impact that's happening on the front doorsteps of the residents of Riverside Normal City, and I think we need to listen to those voices. Thank you.
May I? May I just do a quick follow-up on that? And also, early on, a couple of years ago, there were meetings, and there were other options versus, it wasn't just university, it wasn't just Riverside. So there are other options to look at. So I don't think anybody is against necessarily the, well, but, yeah, exactly. Making a statement, sorry.
Yeah, and I want to just go on the record saying I have to listen, as an at-large person, no, let me explain. I have to listen to everyone in the community and weigh my decision that way. So yes, anybody that calls me or emails me, I respond back. I hope if somebody here emailed me and I didn't respond, let me know. I do my job. But you have to remember that I am at large, and I have to listen to every voice, not just one area. Thank you.
Let me answer.
Mr. Bash, we have time.
Mr. President, may I ask, just to be recognized, do we still have Councilman Garrett with us?
No.
Okay.
No.
He has left the room.
Okay, new ordinance. Ordinance 33-25. Ordinance 33-25. An ordinance vacating a part of an alley located in Block 15 of D.H. Kirby's addition to the city of Muncie, Indiana. Is anyone here to speak on that?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we introduce ordinance 33-25.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Powell for introduction, seconded by Councilman Green.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening again.
Yes, ma'am.
This is our first real hearing of it, but the alley itself sits behind a property on Brady Street. The alley is only 75 feet in width, and only, in length, I should say, in 10 feet in width. The north side of the property is bounded by a property that was vacated in 2021. People who did do the vacation did not, they were trying to sell their property to move to Florida, and they had a real quick, had to push it through real quick. And so my client was not able to join the petition to vacate her part of the alley. So this piece of land is truly not accessible to anyone except our client. The north side of the property is south by about 75 feet of Wiser Street. It would be west by 120 feet of Brady Street. And if Wolf Street was improved, it would be 120 feet from Wolf Street. So there is really no access to anyone except the property owner.
Anyone else to speak on this? Any questions from the council?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, resolution. Resolutions, Resolution 17-25. Resolution that, Resolution 17-25, a resolution of the city of Muncie, Indiana, relating to the financing of a fire station project and approving a form of taxpayer petition in the connection therewith. I'd like to say something real quick if I can, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Council Bashman. You withdrew this resolution at last council meeting.
I did.
And to give us the full attention, that we can devote our time to the budget?
I did.
Can you explain why you refiled it in the last two weeks, right after that?
I did not refile it. It was refiled, and I did not refile it.
It had your signature on it, right?
It had my signature on the original one. And it was refiled again, and a surprise to me.
Okay, I guess I got my answer.
Do we need to introduce it in order to discuss it?
Yes. Okay, do we want to introduce it? Is it a valid, is it a valid order? Is it a valid resolution? If it wasn't council-sponsored, okay, then it's on the table.
Just to withdraw.
Do I need to use it?
No, I think, I think I'd rather wait until another time to present it, at my choosing.
Thank you.
She's, you need an explanation? Oh, okay. So do we need to, it wasn't? Oh, wow, no signature.
There's a signature on ours.
It's on ours.
Yes, it was on the original one. It was refiled. I don't know, I did not do it. Oh, okay.
Can, Mr. President?
Yes.
May I ask, who filed it? Who filed it?
The mayor's executive secretary refiled it, and it was the exact same copy as last month. And I checked it, Dan Gibson, and Dan Gibson said, "They're refiling it."
This Councilman Gillian.
But that was before he knew that a councilperson hadn't caded.
Right.
Yes, yes. No, you didn't, you didn't. No, you didn't do anything wrong. No, right, right.
Neither did I.
Neither did he.
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Dennis Saad, and I'm with Bosman Kenny Evans, and we're working with the city on this project. I just want to answer the question about the signature.
Counsel, are we allowed to discuss, because we haven't introduced it?
Yeah, it hasn't even been filed appropriately.
We'll wait till another month to file it.
I apologize. We'll get clarification on a question of signatures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, is there any other business?
Names of people to write.
I'm waiting on it.
Oh, my goodness.
I know. Okay, so. Ready?
Yeah.
Rick Gensler. Okay, Courtney Marsh. Been one of them days, right?
Good evening, council. My name is Courtney Marsh. I'm a Muncie resident, and I am your president of Southside Neighborhood Association. I come to you tonight to tell you about something a little fun. I know this meeting has been very serious, and I hope that we've all taken it very seriously. But I'm here to just share some fun now. In October, we put on a great event for a lot of our local heroes. Some of those people may be sitting up here in front of us. Some of those may be in the audience tonight. This might never get easier. But on October the 28th, from 5:30 to 7:30 over at Ball Court Park, which is located on South Macedonia Avenue, we're gonna have drinks, games, special events, I'm sorry, special guests, raffles, and of course, always something fun we throw in at the end. We would invite everybody to come out, sign our game ball. We have one for basketball and one for kickball, and if your name's on it, you're going home with a special kid that night. We'd like to thank some of our partners in that situation, one of those being Muncie Police Department, our Sheriff's Department in Delaware County, and of course, our Parks Department for allowing us to use that beautiful green space. Brought along a flyer tonight, so I'll be giving those out to everybody. I hope that you don't keep them in your folders with all that other important information that we went over tonight. I hope that you pass them out, give them to a friend, share them with a teacher. And we hope to see you guys at the event. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janetta Grassley.
Thank you.
Grassley, yeah.
Hello, I'm Janetta Grassley. I live at 1419 West 8th Street, Muncie. I just wanted to let you guys know that the laundry for kids has went over great. We've done 8,000 pounds of laundry for just kids alone. So, and that's with Muncie Folk Collective. So she's been kind of doing that. I've been a little sick, so she's been kind of, she's, I gave her the money, and she's just kind of took that over with the other laundry that she does for the homeless people. But we are still needing funding for that because we have people calling every day wanting to know about doing laundry for their kids. So that's something that's still going on. And also, the Avondale United Methodist Church, they had, we're going to be stopping the meals on Thursday nights, but I've decided that I took that on. Brian left. So as of right now, we still will be having the meals there until we can try to find somebody to replace me, to take that, to keep that going. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl, I'm not gonna mess that last name up. Tijin, okay.
I'm Cheryl Tijens. I've been in front of the city council several times in the last probably 10 years, asking for, well, mainly, I know that safety is... Um, asking for, well, mainly, I know that safety is a real big concern in the city of Muncie, but it doesn't seem that way in the South Muncie. I hate to complain, but I have tried and tried to get uh houses on both sides of me and the city to, it seems like that there's a double standard when it comes to enforcing city ordinances. I, in, in particular, um, one house on, at fifteen sixteen West Thirteenth has a multitude and has for years, for at least ten years, of trash, foundations that are, are rotting, uh trees that are inside the foundation or growing outside of the foundation. So this is a health hazard for not only the tenants that live in this house, but also for the neighborhood. Brings in vermin, you know, everything. And so um, as of May the thirtieth, I sent, uh, or it was sent for me because in some ways, when you start complaining about your neighbors, your safety is at risk. And because they don't like to be complained against, the, the, the slum landlords or whatever that continue to, to be allowed to have this, these types of conditions are continued to be allowed to have that. And the last effort that I made was May the thirtieth. I sent a um, a message to uh our Neighborhood Association president, asking him, he is part of the um sa- house, house, housing safety. And he. I, I know he put in something for me because right after that it was happened, and the people did mow their yard. But they mow their yard, but the landlords don't need, or don't, are allowed to, to keep conditions of the neighborhood the way they are. And this isn't just a new thing. One of our people that it, that are on our board and the Neighborhood Association, um, I think her name is Mary Lambert. Not positive. She said that it took her nine years to get a, a house that was next to her or close to her condemned. And that's what needs to be happening to the, at least this one house on one side of me. And it just, it just doesn't go anywhere. No one does anything about it. And no matter how many times I bring this up by letter to the mayors, uh, two mayors, it's still just as allowed to happen. And another thing that happened just recently is that I was bitten by a dog that lunged over the fence on, he didn't actually get on my property. He lunged about twelve inches away from my property line. I was working there. I had a, a person that was helping me with something. Their truck was there, and I was putting some tools back in the truck. And the dog just, I mean, bit me. And I have pictures. And then when I go down to the um, the humane, or not the Humane Society, um, Animal Control, they said that she produced a uh video showing over a span of maybe an hour or two hours in between that time that they, that the, the owners of the dog produced a video showing that that dog didn't ever lunge over the fence. And it's, I, I have a, a witness that, that said, "Yeah, they did it." I had pictures of my arm. And so basically, they took her position and, and, you know, said, and I asked them, I said, "Well, did you document, did you document that with time, dates, time?" And, "Oh, no, we were really busy. We couldn't do that as far as that video goes." So, and then I said, "Well, can, can you get back with that video and, and document the times?" And they said, "Well, she might have erased it by now." And that I, I would have, that way there would be no proof. So there's just unsafe conditions. And, and, you know, I stand behind, in front of you guys, asking you to make sure that that, those things get taken care of.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to speak. Uh, I'd like to speak with you afterward. I'm on the Unsafe Housing Authority.
Okay.
And I'd like to talk to you right after this meeting, and we'll get some of these things taken care of.
That'd be fine. Thank you very much.
Oh, I wait on me. Best mess, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. You did?
Yeah.
Wow, it's up here twice. I ain't gonna call him. He ain't here. Is the mayor here? Dan ran now?
Yes, ma'am.
Melinda Massanino. She left, too?
She's, she passes.
Pass? Kevin Sim, Simmons? Lynn Thornburg, pass? Man, everybody passing now, okay. Cameron, there you are. That just got short.
Evening again, counsel. Cameron Grubbs. I had one to ask for you. Uh, can we create an award? I would like to create an award for bravery. The mayor deserves a cojones award for the amount of bravery that he shows, week in and week out, to come here and say what he says and have the expectations he has. After emailing you, because we see these things, small parts, through the city's Facebook, but Nora, you had posted, you'd made, been transparent about things that were going on. And the tone that the mayor had taken in one of those uh emails, to sit there and hold a community center hostage? I find that to be ridiculous. Playing, talking about games over the last five years that he's been playing and suggesting that you all are playing games? And then just like the, the meetings that he had, that. It gets frustrating because people are tired of having this happen. They're tired of not being given the information, having the transparency they were promised. I don't understand. I, I still don't understand why when we have a Republican mayor and we now have a Republican council, why we can't have, working together, put out all the information, explain things, explain the insurance, why things change? If the, I have questions about the insurance as far as the budget goes. Whenever you guys talk about that, can y'all talk about, find out before that? Because it's not been provided. What are the changes to the insurance? Because yes, it's gonna go down, but does that mean that insurance, you know, what is offered goes down? People don't want to find out after the fact. They don't, like, I don't know how many, we got six hundred people, six hundred employees that they talk about, two hundred and nine on EE, a hundred and ninety-nine on family. I would not want to be somebody that finds out after the fact that my kid can't get the treatment that they need. I'd be pissed off if I was an employee and that, that stuff's getting tossed around like political footballs. Put out the information. I don't understand why that doesn't happen. It's not your fault. You guys are dealing with what they give you. He came in late, but the Republicans, too, y'all have to help out, try and work. Why aren't we putting explainers out there? Like, show what's going on. Why do we need this? Why do we not need that? Why do we have to pay for Channel sixty? Who the freak uses Channel sixty anymore? Sorry. With that kind of stuff. Like, it, it's frustrating. And so like, if we can, I'm all for working together, but I am tired of, I know I'm not the only one. I'm tired of feeling like we can't get information out of this administration. I know I'm preaching to the choir, absolutely. And Republicans alike, I know you feel me. It's not, this is not a Republican-Democrat thing. This is purely, we need accountability, we need transparency from our administration, from the people who decide what our budget is. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Bilbury.
I'm gonna kind of springboard off Mr. Grubbs' comments. First and foremost, I think that what we saw at the end of the meeting with the resolution, I, I don't know if it's sixteen or seventeen, because it was sixteen last month. You guys didn't take action on it. It was tabled, it was pulled off. And then this month, it was apparently filed without the council's approval, and it was renumbered. So I don't understand what was, why that's happened. So maybe we look into that as well. But I, I think time after time, we see things like this happening, and it, it is very frustrating. Cameron's right. It is extremely frustrating. It, it's not this hard. It shouldn't be as hard as it's being made. This budget process has been probably one of the more painful processes in the last several years. I, I want to read a quick state, uh, the end of the statement from a mayor's email from nine-twenty-four. "The mayor of Muncie said," and I quote, "I was never asked to be at the Finance Committee meeting." He said "meeting," I'm saying "finance," on nine-twenty-three. "So I was surprised my absence at such a, was such a big deal. Had I been asked to attend, I would have been there and answered questions as well. Mister Mayor, I know you're not here because our voice doesn't matter, but let me be the first to invite you to every public meeting from here until the end of your term. You don't need an invitation to come and answer questions. It's not that difficult. You guys need to demand that he be here. I understand he can do what he wants, but if you do that, it puts him on the spot." That takes me to the next statement. During the Finance Committee process, you guys multiple times would ask members of the Controller's Office for information. And I hear the members of the Controller's Office say this in other meetings, Border Works meetings, uh, Redevelopment Commission meetings. They're asked questions that they know they're coming into the meeting, and they say, "Well, shucks. If we, if only we knew that this was gonna come up, we could have answered this. We left it upstairs." Recede the meeting for five minutes. Don't say, "Well, we'll give you till Friday to get it." Say, "We'll take a five-minute recess. We're on the first floor of City Hall." They're on the third floor. Tell them to run up the stairs or in the elevator and get what they need. Moreover, we all remember in school where they would say, "Come prepared." If you're walking into a Finance Committee meeting and you're the administration and you've prepared the budget, I, it's, it makes sense to me that they would want that budget passed. So to say, "Well, we've provided you everything," and that everything is a graph on a half of a printer paper, I just, it, it floors me because we're still having an issue where the administration's saying they've provided you everything you need to know about the insurance. If the Muncie mayor is making the change for the insurance based off that one graph, we shouldn't be making the change. That's not enough information. And when they, can I ask you a question? Are we self-insured or not self-insured? The cities, do we know? Can anyone answer that?
We can't.
In the past, we've been self-assured, but I don't, I don't know now.
Okay, okay. I'll send, I'll send an email to the uh Controller. And that brings me to my last point. And um, I, I thought very long and hard about saying this, but I've got more comments to make about this, but I want to speak it, I want the mayor and the controllers to be here when I talk about this. So I guess I'll wait until you guys talk about it during the special meeting during the budget, and I'll come up at that time and speak this so they can hear it because I want them to be present. But this last thing I want to talk to you guys, and it's about them, and it's about a lot of you. Okay? And I mean no disrespect when I say this, but I'm just telling the truth. Okay? Counselor Powell and I are not the greatest of friends. Okay? It's, it's pretty, pretty well-studied that we have animosity between us. Okay? Every time since she's been back in this seat, she has answered every email that I have sent her. I email every single one of you, and not a damn one of you can hardly ever respond. It's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. Jerry, I've known you for a long time. You've never sent me an email. I don't know what the deal is. If you can't email, you shouldn't be there, okay? Rose Selvi emails, all right? I don't know that I've received an email, email, or two or three from Counselor Galyon, one or two from uh McIntosh, and maybe one from Basham. Maybe, I don't know. But if you guys can't email, you're in the wrong seats. It's twenty-twenty-five. You have, it doesn't matter if you like me or not. If I can ask Nora Powell a question and she can respond, you should be ashamed of yourselves because you cannot. Okay? I'm just, I just want to be clear. And that goes for the mayor, that goes for the controller, that goes for everybody that is an elected or appointed public servant. So we just have to be clear about this. This is not rocket science. We don't have to be best friends, but you have a job to do. And if you're not doing it, you shouldn't be in these seats. Okay? That's it. I guess I'll save them up more next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Adi Barber?
I'd like to introduce myself. My name's Adi Barber. I know some of you guys know me. I know there's a lot of new, or two new, a lot of new faces on the council now. I haven't been up here for a while because I've been sick. With a pause. Last year, we was discussing the fire station, the nine-and-a-half million dollar building. Beautiful building, beautiful fire station. It's, you know, beautiful place. But here, with the budget meetings and stuff, we're at a shortfall. I think some of the contracts that you guys have discussed and, and agreed to, some of them said that if you didn't have the money to give them the raise, they would drop back to the three percent instead of the ten percent. Now they're giving you packages again to raise again another ten percent every year, two or three, depending on when the contract's up. And I understand these guys are underpaid. I love them all to pieces. They're great people. I've got family on that department and on the police department. But if we can't afford to pay them more than what we got, then we can't afford to pay them more. And it's just that simple. It's if you don't have the money to pay your light bill, you don't go out on Friday night. You don't have money to pay your water bill, you don't stop at Starbucks that morning. So on and so forth. With that being said, I have tried for several years to get the council to pull this mayor in check, cut his money off. If you cut his money off, he will have to answer your questions. He will have to answer your questions. Quit giving him everything he wants. I know some of the new council members are now on a different party than what they were before, and it's a, and it's a Republican-controlled council now. But you guys still have to get the spending under control. It's that simple. If he's spending money and you don't have the money to spend, and he will not respond to you, you cut him off with his money. When we were kids growing up, if we told our parents a fib or a stretch the truth a little bit, or a damn lie, we got grounded. We got our cars taken away from us. We got our money taken away from us. We wasn't allowed to go nowhere. Mr. Basham, did you have something to say?
No, I don't.
Okay. Well, I just noticed she was mumbling under her breath, so I'll let you give, have a chance if you'd like. Cut his money off, shut the money off, do it immediately, and he'll start answering you. He's got three more years of this stuff, guys. Hit two and a half, three years, okay? Who wants to put up with it, how much longer? We've been going through it for six years now. Now's the time to step up, grab the bull by the horn, and stop this crazy stuff. He's got people in his office putting in resolutions and ordinances and stuff, and the councilmen don't even know about it. What in the heck is going on there? I think that may be some kind of fraud, maybe? Possibly? So please, please, take your job seriously up there. Be a, a steward for the citizens that elected you guys to be up there and stop the stupid nonsense of spending and him not responding to you. Cut his money off. Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, Artie.
Wayne's gay. Leave me, I had no plans on saying anything tonight, I was expecting a budget. And I wasn't gonna say anything. But I'm confused. Why are we not having a budget meeting? Why did they vote? And I, I, I understand what Bilbury was saying about the, uh, you guys met and it should have been a public meeting, I understand what he said about that because I saw everybody talking, but a man in a pink shirt, I forgot your name, I just turned sixty, man, so I'm, it's, it's, Jerry, sorry, Jerry. So I understand what he said about that, but I wanna know, can y'all explain to us why we didn't have a meeting tonight? Anybody?
With only eight members present, you can't vote on an, uh, um, the adoption of appropriation electronically. So the fact that Mr. Garrett was, was absent, we could not, he could not vote or participate at all in the meeting as long as there was, we were considering for adoption those three budget ordinances. Um, we opted to delay action and wait till he is back because if we went down that path and there was a no vote, if it was, if, if it was tied, then there, we ran the risk of the budget being reverted back to the twenty twenty-five totals, which doesn't sound bad because you could appropriate money into those line items and make those whole. However, if we revert back to the twenty twenty-five budget, not only do we take those expenses, we also take those incomes. And so we have a one point nine million dollars that Edit is increasing from twenty-five to twenty-six that would have been wiped out. And we have increases to public safety, uh, local expenses that we expect to get, and those would have been erased. And so by what we did tonight, we protected the money that's coming in because it is committed to things like the community center and different projects within the community. We wanted to make sure that we navigated that his absence carefully so that we could all still have a voice, but that we wouldn't find ourselves in a position where we were harming the community. And so he will be back next week and we will be resuming, we will not adjourn the meeting tonight. The October sixth meeting will continue on until we meet on October the sixteenth. When we meet on October the sixteenth, we will resume the October sixth meeting. And that's because we have to not only meet legal requirements, which we, we sought the, the advice of Mr. Delk and Mr. Gibson, but we also have to meet the requirements of Department of Local Government and Finance. Um, I talked to our field rep this morning and we were given two options. What we did, or start the process all over again. But we have to be able to adopt the budget by Monday, November the third, or else we fall into that same category where we revert back to the twenty twenty-five budget. So we navigated it as carefully as possible so that we could all have a voice and have that discussion, but not hurt the community through forfeiting income that we would be receiving.
And see how easy that was? We, nobody understood anything. That's, 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 that's all we needed, was an explanation. So, um, but since I did come up here and say something.
Uh-oh.
There, there is one thing that's, that's been on my mind and it's just commentary. So I don't need a reply unless you want to. But I recall when we had a Democrat mayor and our city was under investigation, federal investigation. Several people went to prison. Sanitary district officials went to prison. All Democrats. Not one time did the two Democrats, I know one was a councilman at the time, one wasn't, but at one, no time during all of that fiasco, did they jump ship. Not one time did they say, "You know what, my party's top official's going to prison, I'm jumping ship." They stuck with it, they stuck with it. So I'm just curious. I mean, I don't know of anything that happened lately, why jump ship now? I don't get it. And I'm not political, I mean, I don't care, I'm not Democrat or Republican, I could care less. But I'm just curious, is there something, there's an underlying factor to make you jump ship? After all the stuff the Democrats went through and the disgrace on the Democrat Party, you stuck with it. And then out of the, out of a sudden, nothing happens and you jump ship. So I just wanted to make the commentary, thank you.
Can I have a little quick question, please? Can you tell me how long this meeting has been scheduled? Has it always been the first Monday of every month for twenty-five, thirty, forty years?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted that to be on the record, thank you.
Okay, that concludes. Anybody else?
No.
No, we're ready.
No, we're just.
And then you will read out, if we're ready, Harold, if we're ready to, to finish, then you read that.
Yeah. I don't know what you're pointing at.
The government says, it starts with pursuant, okay, you have it?
Okay, pursuant to the prior action of council, this meeting will reconvene on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five to cons, to solely consider the budget ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.